Call this meeting to order. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. The city in which we live, God has us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ.
Amen.
Okay, this is a special work session, the City Council, the City of Noonan, to do a workshop on two rezoning requests. I would like to say publicly that at the very beginning, this is, these are not public hearings. So therefore, there would not be an opportunity for the public to speak at these hearings. These are work sessions. The public is certainly welcome to be here and encouraged to attend. But the public hearings we'll have on these two items should be at our January the 28th meeting at 6:30. So that is the opportunity for the public to engage the council, their opinions in public hearing. So Ms. Donovan is going to handle this first one. This is a rezoning request, RZ 2024-03, for .186 acres located on 51 Robinson Street, Ax parcel N 12 004 003A, from heavy industrial district to RU, which is urban industrial, urban residential dwelling, historic infill, for the purpose of constructing a duplex. Ms. Donovan, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank you very much.
Good, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. As you can see, this is the property in question. It's located, there we go, this parcel sitting right here. It's located close to Savannah Street and Robinson Street intersection there, next to the Newell Grocery, which is located here on the CUN site. And we've got a mixture of zoning designations in this area. We have RUI, which is the majority of this green you see here. We have CUN here, which is neighborhood commercial. And then we have this, which is the heavy industrial. And the tract, as you said, is zoned IHV. The site is currently vacant, and the subject property is the top picture you see up there, with quite a significant amount of ground vegetation. And the applicant is seeking to construct a duplex on this site. And this side pretty much gives you a good idea of the neighboring uses that are in that area. We have, as we discussed, the Newell Grocery store. This used to be old theater building back in the day. It's been a part of it at this point in time. It sits across the road. And then, of course, this is a duplex that does exist at the corner of Savannah Street and Robinson Street. So there's a mixture of uses, as we discussed. So this is the picture of the duplex that the applicant is proposing to build. So each side of the unit will be approximately 1,250 square feet of heated living space, two-bedroom, two-baths, open living area. Also, a two-car garage will be provided for each unit with the price around $321,000 each. In terms of the current zoning on the property, that's IHV. I'm going to take a look at this. This just gives you an indication of what could be built out there under the IHV, the footprint that would be left. The lot itself is only 90 feet deep. So when you take in consideration the landscape buffers and the setbacks, you're looking at basically a 10 by 30-foot space for a building. Then when you add in parking, you add in outdoor storage, possibly a dumpster pad and so forth, you basically, it's almost impossible to fit something industrial on that site. So that is why they're here today, asking for it to be changed in zoning. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this in December meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval, and with the condition that the duplex would be consistent with the renderings and specifications provided by the applicant as part of this rezoning application. Those minutes have been included in your packet. The owner's representative, Ms. Gail Bickham, is here to answer any questions you might have, and I'm here as well.
Okay. First question, I guess I have, is that even though it's impossible, virtually impossible to build something there, industrial, they're able to do this residential, are they going to need to ask for any variances from BZA regarding this?
In lieu of having to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission is recommending that you all make it consistent with the plan that's been submitted as a condition of zoning, to keep them from having to go get additional variances.
Right, have to take that next step.
Yes, sir.
That was my question. Okay, good. Any other questions?
I've got one. These duplexes are for sale and not for lease?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
That's not their condition, is it?
That it has to be for sale? No, sir.
Anything else?
And I'm not the savvy one on real estate, but that would also include the land for sale as well, correct? Like each side would get their land, or however that works?
Yes.
Okay.
If you address an applicant, if you could come forward and state your name for the record, please? That would be great. Thank you.
Greetings, Happy New Year, everyone. My name is Gail Bickham.
Okay, thank you. So the land's going to go with each part of the duplex? And then, is there any requirement or any way to ensure that these are actually sold and not sold to a larger rental company that's just going to buy them and then rent them, turn around and just rent them right back out?
Yes, so our goal as a builder, as a company, as citizens of Georgia, is to provide elevated, affordable housing, so that people can not only enjoy where they live, but have something they can be proud to own. So as a part of our business model, we don't do properties that are sold to investors to rent. These will be owner-occupied. They'll be affiliated with the master association to ensure that the lawns are properly maintained. And our goal is to rinse and repeat this if it is determined this is a good fit for the local market here in the City of Noonan.
You said a master community? What is that? I didn't see anything in there about that.
Yes, we hadn't reached that point yet. So rather than have multiple HOAs throughout Metro Atlanta, because this is not the only area we're building in, we will afford the owner occupants to ensure that the grounds of the property is properly maintained at all times. We don't want any overgrown grass. So they will have a fee that is assessed at the time of closing to cover that cost for the first year. And basically, it's just keeping the landscaping in order, maintaining any grass on the property, and making sure it's a complement to the area in which we built.
So it'll be a covenant and an annual assessment?
Yes.
Is it an ongoing annual assessment?
Yes, it will be ongoing. And it's in the best interest of the owner. So it won't be very high for each yard to be cut, so.
Right.
At one point, I just want to clarify, it talked about a, and maybe this was Ms. Donovan, part of the, you talked about a pad for the trash and dirt dumpster. Would this be having individual trash, right? Not like a big dumpster sitting somewhere?
That is correct. Each unit will have its own trash can for pickup on a weekly basis.
Okay, so basically, like two separate homes, like in any other community? And they'd have to be responsible for their own trash and everything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this single-story or multi-story? I can't.
This particular unit will be single-story. We can optionally, based on the plans we have for this, do it as a basement unit. Our focus is single-story slab units. And so what you see is an image of this being built on a slab, main level, with all accommodations on the main level.
Okay, so you'd lose the staircase that's in there? That's what made me ask?
The staircase, yes, yes, ma'am. Thanks for pointing that out. Staircase goes away, and that becomes additional heated square footage.
Any other questions of the applicant or staff? Anyone?
One other quick question. So this is part of a larger master community across the whole metro. What community would that be?
So as an entity, we are Custom Dwelling. You can find more about us at YourCustomDwelling.com.
Custom, custom or custome?
Custom. Home plus custom equals custom. So C-U-S-T-O-M-E, home.
Okay.
YourCustomDwelling.com. We are, our goal is to make community across the various areas where we build, as well as make HOAs affordable. We have several opportunities in other areas where we're looking to build on private lots, so they're not a part of a subdivision per se. And again, the goal is to complement what we do by making sure that every property that we offer is well-maintained and a complement to the communities that we're in. So owners, when they close, it will be clearly explained what our role is as a master HOA, and what will be covered as it relates to the ownership of their property. And in most cases, it will simply be maintaining the lawn.
So looking down the road, someone decides to move to somewhere, and they put their property on the market, and so they can do that, this is fee simple ownership, correct?
Yes, they are fee simple ownership.
So they can do that, and so at the time that they close on that property with the new owner, does the HOA, is it, does it transfer with the property?
Yes.
Or are you going to maintain that continuous HOA connection?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I get the concept. I mean, because when you just have, I mean, you have a large community, it's pretty standard to have an HOA, so that you have some consistency and common areas in mind. I get that, and that's a good thing. And I get what's going on here. If you were to buy your side, and then your neighbor does not maintain their house, then it really is going to take away from your side, because it's just right there.
Right.
And so I really, I see the big picture here. But what I'm looking at is 100 years from now. How does this work?
How do you maintain it?
You know, because when we have a local HOA, it's after the developer, typically there's some threshold, the developer turns it over to the residents, and then they are in control of it. So, you know, at least, for better or for worse, at least you could say, well, the residents, you know, are in control of their surroundings.
Right.
So in this case, how do the, you know, that would be my, I get where you're going, but I don't, I don't see it play out in the future. I'm worried about that.
Okay, so first, ultimately, everything, as we go along, we would have individuals that have a role in leadership of managing this process. 100 years from now, I mean, my thought is put certain components in a trust and still run it the same. Have we finalized that method? Not quite. It is a work in progress. We know for a fact, the next 10, 15 years, we'll still be here doing what we're doing. We're not looking to come in to be a builder that appears and disappears. My background, I've been in real estate 34 years, majority of that has been in new construction. So I know very well, ins and outs. And now is the time, I finally decided, it's time to give communities what they need. So, you know, some of what we do is a living work in progress. If it ever came a point, if we, in creating the HOA, you know, we have to have our attorney set the guidelines and the covenants. We plan to use Lizega Johansson for that, good friend of mine. She handles all of the HOA covenants over there. We're both real estate instructors here at the State of Georgia, so we see each other every year. If we needed to create a further management strategy or exit strategy, we are prepared to do that. I certainly understand the concern of what does this look like 100 years from now? So it can, will be addressed. If nothing else, set up in a trust. And it's just like any other HOA, even when turned over to the homeowners, it would be managed the same, even though each occupant may live in a different county.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, I guess that leads me to a question. So this is truly an HOA, right?
It will be formed, and yes, because obviously, we've got to get through all these stages before we can initiate that, but it would be a true HOA.
Okay, and so, I'm just trying to think through the legality of that, and again, I don't come from a real estate background. Based in all these different counties, is there a legal issue with having an HOA that 's spread across multiple jurisdictions?
Well, that's why it would be a master HOA, and no.
But you do plan to record the covenants and restrictions at each county that you've built in?
Absolutely.
So that they're there at the courthouse?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's the link between each county, is that the same covenants or restrictions are recorded, should be recorded in every county?
That is correct.
That you're doing, in which you're doing business?
Yes, so we're, we're starting in four counties. This is actually the first project launched. We're currently in the throes of a project in Henry and one in Clayton.
And you have covenants recorded in those counties?
We're in the throes, literally beginning everything. For example, what we're doing here with you all right now, we've moved faster than we have in the other places, but that's coming up on our calendar over the next two months. And yes, precisely the same tasks, deliverables, will be established and completed, so that we function properly, legally, as an HOA.
Anyone else?
Well, follow-on question.
Sure.
So this, so this is your very first project, so this, the company, the whole, this whole concept is just beginning right here in Noonan.
This is the first unit, yes. The owner of this particular property is a friend of mine. He's asked us to come in and build on it, and so we're doing that for him.
So will the HOA actually be owned by the homeowners, or will it remain under a corporate ownership the entire time?
It would need to remain under a corporate ownership the entire time.
So does that beg the question of a homeowners' association?
Well, you have three types of homeowners' associations. If we were to turn it over to the homeowners, again, master over individual, right? So there are certain costs that have to be cared for. Why are we even creating this? Because we want to make sure that the properties continue to be an asset and aesthetically pleasing assets in the neighborhoods in which they are built. So HOAs, as a master HOA, I will have to get back with you on how we handle turning it over. The plans were not to turn the master HOA over. If we only have one building down here, which we could potentially do more, that part remains to be seen right now. Someone has to maintain the law and ensure that it's done. If we don't, if we, as Custom Dwelling, don't manage that, then I can't stand before you and say, hey, we're going to make sure that anything we build is an asset to the area and is aesthetically pleasing, because we can't control what a homeowner is going to do.
Has this model been used anywhere else? Have you seen this anywhere else within the state or elsewhere?
So 34 years, master creative, this is Gail Bickham's brainchild, and we're getting solid buy-in. I get more calls than we can handle each day on people ready, willing, and able to buy, and we've had no opposition for how we plan to manage the development. As a licensed real estate educator, part of what we're rolling out this year is also educating agents, as well as consumers, potential homeowners, on the value add of this business model, and what should be important to them in homeownership overall. I've seen HOAs fall apart. I've seen HOAs lose money. I've seen HOAs that you think would be pristine get into debt. I've seen it all. So if we're suggesting that the current model is 100% effective, and not one that can become disruptive, that would be an inaccurate statement. Here we know our costs will be effectively managed, be no different than, and we're not a leasing company. Well, I don't even think they get involved to this level. Difference, main thing is, we are here to implement a standard operating procedure that ensures that the properties we build are well-maintained. And the only way to do that is to manage it, collect the money for it, send the people out to do the work, and always have a trust but verify system. That's it.
Okay, so you're a principal of this company, then?
Yes, I am.
So would, I guess I'm thinking, again, going back to Councilman Thompson's question, in 100 years down the road, say the corporation doesn't exist, or for whatever reason, can't exist, you know, play that scenario in your head, will there be a mechanism to release these homes from the HOA so they can still function, or exist, or be individual homes at that point, or under a condo association, or whatever they are?
Absolutely. Every contract requires a termination clause, so this would be no different.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, and it has nothing to do with HOA. It has to do with the price. It says up here, the estimated pricing will be around $320,000. Is that per unit?
Yes, that will be per unit, based on the loan products we have available from our lenders, which include Renaissance Bank. They have a product in which it is 100% financing, $10,000 towards closing costs. We would contribute $10,000 towards closing costs. Plus, no mortgage insurance, gives a comfortable payment, not far off from what people pay for rent.
So what are we talking about? Your...
So this is not for rent, it's for sale.
Well, I get that. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around what that mortgage looks like for someone, since you said it's affordable.
Mm-hmm, so with the average sales price here in Metro Atlanta, you're going to be between $288 to $350 to be categorized as affordable. We're looking to be at about $321,000. Interest rate ultimately dictates what the payment will be. Buy downs are an option for us. We're estimating monthly mortgage payments, anywhere for this particular unit, between $24,000 to $2,800, pending the loan product, pending the down payment, pending the loan type. So someone could go FHA, VA, conventional, they could do private funding. If they go VA, there's no mortgage insurance. FHA, no mortgage insurance. Certain types of conventional, no mortgage insurance. 20% down, automatically, no mortgage insurance. And then there's the option to decide if they'd like to have their rate bought down. A buy down is going to cost anywhere from one point for each quarter of a point. So if the sales price is $278, for example, which is going to be the pre-sale price, then some, this is what this particular owner wants to start at, as of last week. Person comes in, they purchase, we base their mortgage on their loan amount. Over time, if both units were not sold, which I don't anticipate, we have the option to go up in price.
One more, one more thing. I agree with the earlier assessment about this property. It's not conducive to industrial. I think it does, you know, smell like residential. I do see one structure on there, a fee simple structure, rather than this concept. Would your, would, is it possible for you to make this work with building a single house?
So the goal is to make it beneficial and profitable. When we look at the width and the depth of this particular building, to build a home that is elevated and nice would be more than what someone would be prepared to pay to live by a railroad track and a convenience store. So that wouldn't be feasible for our business model. But this, we know that there's interest. We know that people are prepared to pay, and we know despite it being next to a convenience store and backing up to a railroad track, folks are very interested.
I have not a question, but more of a comment. When we talk about it here in Noonan, for example, first off, I want to really applaud you for your business model and your program. I think it's something that is definitely needed, certainly in Coweta County and throughout, throughout probably the state, but whatever you're tackling. And I think you're, it's outside-the-box type thinking when it comes to what you're, the project and the product that you're presenting is a type of infill product that we actually do need in Noonan, for example, and even in Coweta County. But then you also go to, and I like the idea of your holding on, your game plan is to hold on to make sure that value stays intact.
Thank you.
And I'm quite confident that you and your company, with your years of experience, will fine-tune that to produce a really very marketable product. This is really, I haven't heard of anything like this, which I think is good. It kind of reminds me of Chick-fil-A, how they hold on to the majority of the percentage so they maintain value, they maintain control of the product. So I kind of see what, that's where you are. I just want to say, you know, hats off. I think great job.
I want to thank you for your comments. That really means a lot. And I want to share a statement, try not to get emotional. So when we started this meeting, it opened with prayer. And this is the first time I've been in this type of setting in a city amongst you noble beings. I like that, I love that, because that's how we start our day. More importantly, you know, when we think about prayer, the kingdom of God, and anything that gets created, the key to it working is the wisdom in between. You know, I tell my students, ask me how I took $2.50 over the course of four weeks and turned it into $80,000. It was the wisdom, because back in 2001, at that time, the wisdom was buying the newspaper, contacting people, sharing knowledge with them, that would create a win-win-win scenario. And in exchange, it benefited myself in a very short period of time with a large sum of money, although they got far more in-use value than they would ever pay me in cash value. So anytime I seek to create a business model and go this far with it, that is always the first consideration. And I want to thank everyone for their input, because the next thing is always be prepared to tweak, to address issues that may come up, that I may not have thought of. So ultimately, provided everyone's on the same page about what we're looking to do, any tweaks that are needed to make it stay on path with our goal of adding value to the City of Noonan with elevated affordable housing, that is what we are prepared to do.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Could you, could you just define elevated affordable housing for me?
Absolutely. So been in this many years, right? So, quick story, my builder, we're down in Henry, love what we do. I remember being placed in a neighborhood where if you saw this particular builder, you thought you were getting many mansions. You see our houses, they're really small. And so, of course, I can't change what this particular builder was offering. So it's my responsibility to fully understand what their product provided. Long story short, ours trumped theirs. Number one, we were the, we were one of the few remaining stick builders. Number two, we use Advent Tech subflooring. Number three, we cased all of our openings and our windows. Number four, our ceilings were, in our basements, were 10 feet as opposed to eight. Number five, our materials overall were superior to what we were competing against. And as one still in relationship with that particular builder in Henry County, that is still the situation. And so it's always my job to understand what other people are doing, not because the focus is to compete, because their customer is their customer, and our customer is ours. It's to understand what is versus what isn't, and be able to effectively demonstrate the difference in the value. And so when I think about materials, longevity, and as it was pointed out earlier, 100 years, you've got to think about what materials you're using that will sustain. For example, me personally, I prefer sight-finished hardwood floors. We know how long that lasts, and it lasts a very long time. LVP, don't know, not so much. Don't like my shoes clacking on it. Wouldn't want someone else to have their shoes clacking on it. So that is what I mean when I say elevated. Just because others decide they want to cut corners, cut costs, because they have to manage overhead and meet goals for their investors, we are not of that. We are local, we are small, and we care about the citizens in our local communities.
All right, thank you. I'd never heard the term elevated, affordable housing.
So it's the term created to separate and demonstrate that no matter if you're spending this amount, this amount, or this amount, you deserve a quality home, and it needs to be elevated, in our opinion.
All right, thank you.
I've got one more question. I was looking at your site plan here, and it says you have front setback of 19 feet. I've got a question for staff. One of the things we've run into in other developments that we've had is having enough room for off-street parking.
Mm-hmm.
With the garage out of the front, is that going to fit?
So what we did is, we actually had to modify it, because they weren't showing 19 feet, and 19 feet is the length they're required to have for the drive-by. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? We thank you for being here today. Anything else from staff on this particular issue?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for being here today. We'll have our public hearing, our second meeting in this month, January 28, 6:30.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item, item B, I'm going to have to accuse myself, because an agent in my firm is representing the applicant. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Thomason to take charge of the meeting at this point. And I wish you all a happy new year, and I'm going to take my leave.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brady. Dean Smith, this continues our work session. This is for the rezoning request, RZ 2024-04-7.06 acres at 147 Temple Avenue, tax parcel N21-0001-001, from CUN Urban Neighborhood Commercial District to PDR Planned Development Residential. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Before, use kind of an aerial project map. The area highlighted in blue represents the subject property. It is predominantly surrounded by residential to the north and to the east, and then commercial ranging from general and heavy commercial to the urban commercial along the west and portions of the south. And then over here is the Temple Avenue Park, Coweta County Park property kind of butts up and touches here on the far end. You have a product, you know, Mr. Jones, attorney, is representing Tempore Development. Tempore Development was the same developer that came before you about a year or so ago on the Bullsboro Drive residential rezoning, and that project is currently under plan review at this time. This gives you an illustration of what they propose to do. The plan that was presented and that Planning Commission voted on included 29 total attached dwelling units. And those attached dwelling units are three different styles: townhomes, triplexes, and duplexes. There is an environmental issue with this lot. There's a stream and associated stream buffers that run through this northern section. This plan shows no disturbance in that area, and will limit all activity outside of the stream buffers and away from the wetlands and the floodplain. The initial presentation that was given to us indicated that there would be 29, as I mentioned, units ranging in size from 1,127 to 1,329 square feet, homes to be developed for sale at market rate conditions. One of the discussion items that came as a result of the Planning Commission meeting was setting a limitation on the number of units could be available for rent. One of the conditions decided that meeting was no more than three of these units would be available for rental. And this gives you an idea, just going through some of the slides here, the illustration of the different products they propose to offer and come through. That right now with this proposal, it shows an overall density of four units per acre. That is a similar density to what we have known as RU7, which is predominant throughout various parts of the city. There are amenities showing as a walking trail, passive open spaces, along with conditions that were listed in the report be consistent with what's been shown. The mixture of dwelling types would be consistent with what's been provided. And that additionally, that they would be limiting it to 29 units max. And also, I would mention that Mr. Furbus looked at this from the preliminary tree management plan, and he had no comments. He said the preliminary tree management plan is submitted, but looked good to him, and he was approved with it. With that, that's in essence what you have before you at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Smith?
I have a question regarding, and then the traffic. It will all, I see they're proposing to put in like a road that goes over to Widener Street, but it all still dumps out into Temple regardless. How would traffic be impacted by this development, in your opinion?
We did not, the, this size and scope of this development didn't necessitate any sort of a traffic study. But we did ask our city engineer to look at it, and he did not anticipate any additional traffic. And there is an emergency access only point that will be built and connected to the existing Widener Street. The applicants also agreed to make improvements to the existing Widener Street as needed. It is limited, because it's only an 18-foot right-of-way, so there are some limitations on what we can do with that. But in terms of the impact on the traffic flow, my guess is that they're going to have to go through the Georgia Department of Transportation, and our experience, and other experience of developers, that probably may be right-in, right-out only. So maybe limiting the ability of anybody coming out there and doing left turns, which may help ease the flow of traffic. But that's a decision not up to us.
Yep.
But we did not anticipate any big demand on traffic above and beyond what's currently there, or what may be in the area.
So what did they present, propose with the road to be kind of in line with Ellis Street, or offset from Ellis?
It looks like it's a little, it's like kind of across the street, it's kind of connects to Ellis Street. It's hard to see from this viewpoint, but it does seem to have a lineup of Ellis.
So I see where, we, you good?
Yeah, go ahead.
Counsel McGee.
One of the things that was addressed in some of the, in the comments regarding from the Planning Commission, which I kind of have a similar observation. Is the siding and the material being used and the presentation and elevation of these particular products, is there something that the builder is willing to adjust? I mean, and by that, I'm saying these particular properties, I actually had a conversation with the mayor regarding the entry level per square foot cost of these houses is roughly, according to my calculations, is $263 per square foot, which, I know I've been in real estate, but I must have been out of it for quite some time, because those numbers are staggering to me. That being said, I think that that would demand, is anybody here from the...
The applicants are here.
I think it would demand a, certainly a quality build, as was stated from the previous person of the, of the material being used, et cetera. And not to mention, that doesn't even include a garage, but just outdoor, two parking spaces in front of the, of the units.
Right. No garages were anticipated with what's been provided. There were no garages shown on any of these products.
Right, right. I get that. The reason I brought that up, no garages, is the per-square-foot entry level cost of these. So with no garages being on there, one would assume elevations could be changed, one would assume that the materials would, could be different. Is that some of that?
Would the applicant mind standing up and answering these questions?
Yeah, I won't let the applicant address that, because that gets into proprietary issues that are beyond our control.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that last?
I mean, we don't regulate residential building material requirements from a zoning standpoint.
No, I'm just, just a question. I'm not asking for the regulation of it. I'll let those guys.
Yeah, let the applicant talk about that.
Counsel McGee, you want to ask that question?
Did you understand the question, my comments?
Yes, Councilman.
Kind of just...
If you could just state your name. Would you state your name for the record? Sorry.
Yes. My name is Stephen Jones. I'm with the law firm of Taylor English. I'm here today on behalf of Tempore Development, who is the applicant here.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel McGee.
So I'm not really asking you to, I know you're presenting this, and what I'm really asking is, have you guys considered, and maybe just address the quality of the product and elevations? And honestly, everything fits, and maybe what I'm asking is more on the personal side of things as well, is what we're seeing going up in the city of Noonan, from that perspective. Does that make sense?
If you're talking about the materials used in the construction, all the exterior will be hardy plank. There will be no vinyl used in these products. So from a material standpoint, hardy is the longest material, lasting material that we can put on the outside, as opposed to, and the most quality vinyl might last longer, but hardy is better than wood. And we think, in our experience, that that's the best outside siding you can have.
I would agree, yeah. Maybe it wasn't so much of a question, it's more of an observation, and based upon what I saw, some of the commentary from the planning. But that's, we're not regulating that. I can't regulate that from here. It's just a...
You can ask, yeah.
Yeah, we can ask. I can't say you got to put brick on it. I can't say...
No, there wasn't, because there was a concern mentioned by one of the commissioners about adding some masonry. And I think that was, I think at that time, you indicated that was something I would consider looking at at some point. But yes, no, sir, I mean, you can, we can't, from a staff perspective, tell you, you know, it has to be this. Right now, we don't regulate residential building materials, but certainly as part of this ask, if that's something we would like to consider, for them to ask, maybe consider as part of their conditions they look for as they go forward.
So I'll just repeat the same question that the Planning Commission asked, from that perspective. So, and their response was that they would entertain.
I believe that was correct. Is that correct, Mr. Jones?
That's correct, Councilman.
Thank you.
Is there any anticipated price point?
We're aiming for an average of 300 per unit.
So you guys were at, I'm sorry, Cynthia.
Yeah, I'm with that part.
Yes, you're at 300 to 350, it looks like.
That's correct. But I mean, our desire is to get to an attainable price point. So when we say 300, or we give any price point at this point in time, I mean, it's, that would be in today, right? So we're hopeful that there are some market adjustments that allow us to get that price point to a more attainable point at the time that these homes are issued COs.
Yeah, and I'm guessing, I think you guys, I believe I got this one right, that you're ready to break ground and take off right away, is that?
Yes, Councilman. I mean, subject to approval, are engineers ready to start drawing construction plans?
I have a question. Would the road be a public road or a privately maintained road?
It would be public. We've got the limits of the right-of-way out towards the edge of the sidewalk. You also see that emergency access road, and over Widener, which I believe the Councilman referenced.
So my concern is, there aren't any garages. Everybody's parking basically on the road. How many parking spaces? I didn't see anywhere, how many parking spaces per unit?
It is, it's 81.
So what's that, an average per unit?
That's just under three, I believe.
You got, what, 29 units?
It's 2.8.
And the sizes of each unit, I saw the square footage, but like, was it one, two, three-bedroom?
Yes, certainly. I've got those numbers. The townhomes would be 1,300 square feet. That would be a three-bedroom, two-bath. The triplex is 1,127 square feet. That's a two-bedroom, two-bath. The duplex is 1,300 square feet. It's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath.
So would the, the street portion would be public. What about the parking section of that road? Would that be public as well? Would you be, or would that be maintained by the association or whatever would be managing this?
The public right-of-way, we've got extending past the sidewalk, so the parking would be public as well.
Okay, so I have a question for staff, if that's the case. If it's part of the right-of-way, then is the city then, after it gets turned over, responsible for that parking?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
This may be, Mr. Smith, is that, is this parking ratio consistent with?
Right, because there are only about two spaces per residential unit, so they're in excess of what we would minimum would be.
Thank you.
I have a question. At the, looking at the map one here, with the schematic on here, I guess, it shows the, like a cul-de-sac at the end of the road. Is that a cul-de-sac, or would that be for some other purpose? Am I interpreting that correctly?
I believe you are correct. That would be part of the road, it's the cul-de-sac, because they also are showing, you can't see it, I don't think, on this, is there's a light pole at the end here, so that would be part of the road. And that'd be necessary for fire apparatus to be able to get in there and have a sufficient room to turn around and be able to service any sort of fires that happen at the backside of it.
And that, at the end of the cul-de-sac, there are kind of a triangular-looking shaped thing, SWMF. What is that?
Stormwater maintenance facility detention pond.
Would that be landscaped at all, or would it just be just a kind of an eyesore of a?
Well, there, yeah, so you've got a buffer, 35, I think, is it 35 or 35-foot? Which will be, you know, we're basically going to stir, but supplanted with any necessary plantings it may need for the purpose of providing that buffer. You'll have some landscaping around here. There'll be trees. And then you have the vegetation over on the stream side, and the stream buffer, you pretty much have to stay out of that area as well.
I'm looking specifically at the area between the detention and the cul-de-sac. I mean, it looked like you were like right on the sidewalk, and then maybe a few feet of grass or something like that, and then right into the...
I mean, the city's ordinance, landscape ordinance, only requires a certain number of trees, like 16 trees, I think, per acre, or something to that effect. But depending on what the room is and how they can, you know, put in some plantings there, there's no requirement. They have to leave a certain area around that detention pond open for access. So any plantings or trees are typically not advisable too close or around the stormwater maintenance pond, because there will be a maintenance access road, as well as a, to be able to get to it and to clean it out. So typically, we don't want them to plant a lot of foliage around that area, because that just can cause more problems. It could suffocate into the ponds, it becomes more difficult to maintain and clean over time.
So who would be responsible for that stormwater?
The owners will be, the property owners. They sign a stormwater maintenance agreement with the city in which they take ownership and responsibility of that detention facility.
All right. Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add to that, about the landscaping, that area between the cul-de-sac and that stormwater? Anything to, I mean, it just, are you going to have it fenced off? What's going to be there?
Yeah, I mean, generally, they are fenced off, but the idea would be to make it aesthetically pleasing, right? I mean, these are for sale units, and so a prospective purchaser is not going to take kindly or keenly to an eyesore directly out the front door. So it's incumbent upon us to make it look good from a marketing standpoint.
I have a question. The secondary entrance over there, that is a requirement of the city, correct? And that's why they have to have, because of the number of units, they have to have that secondary entrance?
Yes, ma'am. 25 units or more require a secondary entrance, even if it's emergency only.
Okay. And is this going to be full-on paved, or is it going to be like some of that alternate material?
No, I understand it is full-on paved.
Okay. Because Widener is in bad shape, just to be real. It is really bad.
So if I'm not mistaken, the plan is to extend existing Widener, as well as making necessary improvements to what is the pavement area there, up to Temple Avenue.
Okay.
Within the confines of the 18-foot right-of-way that we have.
Yeah. Because it's only maybe one or two houses right there.
I think there's only one house back there.
Yeah, because the rest of it is, not, the road, even though the, it says Widener Street back there, but it's just woods.
You kind of see the unimproved right-of-way. There are several lots that are owned individually, and we have to keep that area as unimproved right-of-way in the event someone wants to come in there and develop that at some point in time. But I think the actual paved area kind of ends somewhere, right about here. Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, one, on the city taking over the road and the parking, is that typical?
Well, we do have on-street parking in areas near downtown.
But I mean, for a new development coming in, is that typically what we do, is we take over the road?
We haven't had it before, but it doesn't mean we, we haven't done it in the past.
Okay.
It's just with all recent stuff, typically, they've had off-street parking. But Mr. Clark, you happy that?
We have subdivisions all over Noonan that have on-street parking. Summer Grove, Avery Park, Woodland Drive, not to this extent where it's exclusively within the right-of-way. But when we typically come in and maintain the road, we don't necessarily redo the parking when we do the road. We'll do the main line, and we may mill out, feather it out. It doesn't require the same amount of maintenance as it would where the wheels are going. Widener Street, Widener Street will be maintained in order to support fire emergency equipment. So it'll be maintained to the Fire Marshal standards. And the detention pond that you referred to is, the standards recommend against fencing in, because you need to be able to have access for safety reasons. They're benched and sloped, so that they're not, you don't fall in and drown, but you, they're, they're not fenced in, so you can go in and get somebody out if you need to get in there. And the landscaping, got to be careful with the landscaping, because the root zones can undermine anything that supports the, the holding of the water. So we were, all those standards will be, will be adhered to in this development, just as we ordinarily would, so.
Well, just follow-up on the city taking over the paving. Does this cause any undue expense to the city that we would bear down the road unexpectedly?
It's not out of the ordinary. Like, the way I mentioned it, we would maintain the, I don't know if you're proposing 11-foot or 12-foot lanes. They would be the ones that are redone more frequently, and the parking will be done as, it's like LaGrane Street. Sometimes we do this high school parking, sometimes we don't. It just depends. And it's not that expensive to mill off an inch, inch and a half, and overlay that as needed.
Thank you.
Just as a comment, you said some of those subdivisions is, from what I remember, the on-street parking isn't necessarily parking spaces, you know, lined parking spaces like this one. It's more of kind of just pull in, pull out, you know, kind of like a... It's more of kind of just pull-in, pull-out, you know, kind of like a?
Some, some are angled. We have some that are, that are angled, but they may not be marked. And you're all right, we do have some that pull off to the side. They may or may not be marked as well.
And those are all city-owned?
And they're within the city right-of-way, yes.
Any other questions? You still thinking?
I've got a lot churning into my head right now.
About war down. The DOT will have, will have a lot to say about the level of the traffic impact study or traffic impact statement. It doesn't really rise to an impact study, but a statement could be done, and they may want to know what the chip, trip generations are, and they want the engineers to comment on what the adjacent intersections, the impact will be on that. So I remember that question from earlier on, so, but it is their road. They'll ask us if we agree or disagree. They may not pay much attention, so.
One other quick question, then. There was proposed amenities, walking trail, passive open spaces. What's the plan for that?
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, so we show a, and propose a walking trail along the water feature. This property is also within close proximity and walking distance, the Temple Avenue Recreational Complex. So we see that as also a huge draw for outdoor passive recreation activities for our residents. So in addition to the walking trail, like I said, that's a huge draw.
So you said it's within close distance of the Temple Avenue area. Is it walkable to the Temple area?
I believe it's about a quarter mile.
But it's walkable sidewalks path?
Correct.
The whole way?
I believe it is. Any other questions?
Double.
I don't think so.
Gentlemen, thank you for your presentation. If counsel has no, nothing else to bring up, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got one more thing? Yes, I do.
You want to show them that?
Yeah. I had a presentation. We, when we went to the Planning Commission, we were proposing 29 units. Our engineer went back and looked at this, and as engineers do, started to tinker with it more, and was able to put additional units on the site plan, and that's for five additional units, which would slightly change the product mix. When we're looking at an attainable product here, obviously, 25% on average of a home's sales price is baked into the land cost, so if we can put a few more units within the development, we're able to push, ensure that those, the end-home price doesn't float up, right? Because more units you have, equates to a lower sales price per unit when you're stretching the price of the dirt across all those units. Because the Planning Commission only considered the 29 units, I've, I've had a brief discussion with Mr. Sears about that, and I know there are some options for the council, for us to amend the application to put that new site plan in that the engineers come up with. Everything is generally the same except for the unit count. We do want the Planning Commission, if, if the council should feel inappropriate, to have an ability to review that revised site plan. Again, everything stays the same except for just the allocation of the units. I can show you here briefly, if you'd like. Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, yeah, I was like, Mr. Sears?
Yeah, so I was going to say, do we need to?
Can you?
I, I think he's kind of looking for some direction at this point about what to request at the next meeting, because this is a PDR, so it's concept-based, and it was based upon advertisements for 29.
Correct.
That's not to say that the report couldn't be true. If the developer came back and said, I'm only putting 25, or where there's additional units, I think what's going to happen is, what he's going to do is, at your meeting on the 28th, he's going to request that you refer it back to the Planning Commission with no action for him to be able to refile so that it can be re-advertising to the planning, the next Planning Commission meeting, and then it'll come back to you at the following meeting, the earliest that it will be done.
Mr. Jones, is that how you, you understand it?
Yes, Counsel.
Okay. I would appreciate that information right at the very beginning. But that being said, Counsel, do you have any questions, since we're in a closed-open meeting?
Do we, do we need to?
I was about to say, we are adjourned.
There's an application to hold. Unless he withdraws the application, then he has to wait six months.
Mm-hmm.[1726.62]